To the April tenth, two thousand twenty-three North Row Board of Selectmen meeting, which I will call to order now at seven oh four P M. I have some introductory remarks as we do just about every meeting. This open meeting of the North Row Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the North Row Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows North Row Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This public, public is allowed and encouraged to, uh, to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to North Row Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will, as always, feature public comment. I will go around the virtual room and, uh, make sure everyone can be heard. Uh, let's see with members, uh, just in order on my screen, Scott Rogers.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch.
Present.
Kristen Wixted.
Present.
Jason Perro.
Present.
We also have with us again, an order on my screen, Fire Chief Dave Parenti.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
D P W Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
And for his first meeting in North Row, uh, brand new interim town administrator, Bob Reed. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we will get started with our meeting and as always, the first item in our agenda is public input. If there is anyone in the audience that wishes to, uh, give us any input on anything, particularly things that are not on our agenda tonight, raise your virtual hands and I will let you in. Doesn't seem to be that much interest tonight, going once. Going twice, gone. First real agenda item, we have approval of meeting minutes. We have, uh, March twenty-seventh and April third. Is there a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the March twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor, uh, Jason.
Hi.
Julianne.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Next.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the April third, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor, Scott.
Hi.
Julianne.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
I also vote I vote unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we have, um, you know what? I'm gonna do a quick introduction that I probably could have done at the beginning, although during the introduction, people probably recognized, uh, uh, Bob Reed has, uh, joined the town as interim town administrator, um, assuming we approve his contract in a few minutes, um, but his first official day was today and, uh, I just want to, on behalf of the board and my behalf of the town, Bob, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm very gratified by the board vote. I'm very happy and, uh, privileged to be in North Row.
Right. We're happy and privileged to have you with us. Thank you. All right. Um, next up, we have Town Clerk Andy Dowd to discussion and vote on in-person early voting for the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three town election. Um, I see Andy here. I'm gonna bring in. And if you'd like to turn on your microphone and your camera if you so desire.
There we go. Good evening.
Clark, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Uh, tell us, uh, about this option and understand the board registrars met earlier. I'm curious, uh, how, what they would like to do as well.
Yes, so I'm here to, um, discuss the early voting options for the upcoming, um, town election, which will be held Tuesday, May ninth. Um, you may recall that the so-called Votes Act, which passed in two thousand twenty-two, now provides for early voting by mail for all voters without excuse. And also requires periods of in-person early voting for all state elections. Um, as far as local elections, um, the law, um, basically it was a, an opt-in and an opt-out option. The, the vote by mail is automatic unless the town were to vote to opt out. I am not here tonight asking the board to do that. I think it makes sense to offer the vote by mail. People expect it and have quickly become used to that option, um, through COVID now that it's a permanent, um, part of the election law. Um, people have the ability to vote by mail if they're unable to come on Election Day or for whatever reason they choose. They don't need a reason. On the other hand, um, the voting in person prior to the local election requires the town to opt in. That's a two-part process. As you mentioned, the board of registrars, um, need to convene a meeting, which we did earlier today. And they need to vote, um, at least fifty percent of the board in support of offering in-person early voting. And once that were to happen, then the board of selectmen approves it. And I'm happy to report that the board of registrars did vote today to opt in and, um, have in-person early voting for the local election. Um, they recommended that early voting be held, um, for the five days prior to the election, which would be Monday, May first, through Friday, May fifth, during the regular business hours of Town Hall. So that'll give folks a full week, including our late evening on Tuesday, um, if they wish to come in and vote in person, um, instead of coming on Election Day. Um, so that's what I'm here for tonight. It would require the board to vote approval of that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Kristen.
So, um, they go to the town clerk's office, right, for that voting?
Yes, the early voting sessions, um, would be held at the town office building, um, more than likely in the selectmen's meeting room. Um, this is a space we typically utilize. Um, but once this approval is granted, I'll arrange for, uh, for the space, but it will be held at Town Hall.
Okay, and they'll be signed, so.
Of course.
Yeah, all right, great, thanks.
Any other questions for Andy? Um, one question is that, uh, I appreciate this and I'm fully supportive of it. Is that the day prior to the election, the eighth, is not on your list? Is that because you'll be busy preparing for the election and, um, uh, et cetera?
Yes, um, as you may recall, the early voting in person for the state elections does end on the Friday before, and I think that makes sense in general. Gives us a little bit of time in between to, uh, to get ready for the big day, as we call it. Um, folks could, um, you know, still, if they're gonna be out of town on Election Day, they would qualify to vote by absentee ballot, uh, on Monday morning before noon time. That's a deadline in the, in the laws. They still have that last remaining option if they haven't either voted early in person the week before or requested a ballot by mail. So they still have another, one more option before, uh, before Election Day.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from either the board or any member of staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to approve in-person early voting for the May ninth town election as recommended by the Board of Registars, and that said, early voting sessions will be held during regular business hours in the town clerk's office, May first, May fifth.
Second.
Is that motion consistent with, uh, with the board registrar's approved, Andy?
Yes.
Fantastic. Uh, let's see, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, Julianne?
Hi.
God.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. You've got your early voting. Thank you very much for this consideration. I, I think this is a good tool to offer. My last question, do we, we need to do this before every local election? Is that correct?
Yes, at this time, it would be a, uh, an annual, um, annual requirement. Um, okay, we're hoping to maybe see some legislative changes down the road that clean up the exception of debt, but at this point, that's the requirement.
Yep. Sounds good. Andy, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, next on our agenda is we have Library Director Jen Bruno, uh, acceptance of a cultural sector recovery for organizations, grant a word from the Mass Cultural Council. Uh, I will bring Jen in. Jen, as you come in, if you could unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you'd like.
Hello.
Hi, Jen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Thanks for having me.
Sure, we'll tell you. So I understand that there's a very exciting potential grant award that we've, we've, that you, you fought for and you got, and, uh, you needed us to take some action. Tell us a little about it if you could.
Sure, um, and just before I get started, I wanted to say on behalf of the library, welcome, Bob. Uh, it's good to have you with us. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Um, so this is a cultural sector recovery grant, uh, for organizations from the Mass Cultural Council. Um, when we applied, the, the minimum amount was five thousand dollars and it was all the way up to seventy-five thousand. Uh, the library was deemed eligible. We were one of roughly twelve hundred organizations around the state of Massachusetts that were deemed to be eligible. And basically, all that means is we meet the definition of a cultural organization and, um, we were negatively impacted by the pandemic, which, yes. Uh, so we were awarded sixty-six thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Uh, the award is unrestricted and there's no specific timeline in which the money has to be spent. Um, so, so we're working with the Board of Trustees to determine how best to spend the money, but that will probably, um, or I should say, it would definitely include some A V upgrades to both of our, um, meeting rooms and some different, uh, furniture upgrades as well. Because those are projects that we've been looking to do, um, anyway, uh, and we will probably save some money because we, we never know what's gonna happen. Um, so just in case anything breaks, uh, you know, we'll have a little bit of extra money, so, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board? I guess everyone's just happy to get the money. Uh, any, any, uh, questions or comments from staff? All right, uh, is there a motion?
Yes, Mister Chair, I believe that's me. Right, okay. I move the board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, to accept from funds from the Massachusetts Cultural Council for building related improvements to the library and to authorize the library board, the Board of Library Trustees to expend such funds.
Second.
This motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Thank you very, very much, uh, Jen, for, uh, for joining us tonight and, uh, for seeking and getting this excellent award.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Congratulations. That's awesome.
Thanks. Yeah, free money is awesome.
Always is. Thank, thanks a lot. Okay. All right, moving right along. Next is vote on, uh, employment agreement with Robert Reed for interim town administrator services. So, uh, Becca, do you want to, you, you helped make this happen rather than putting Bob on the spot since it's a contract with him? Do you want to tell us just a little bit about this and then, uh, and we'll, we'll deal with it?
Sure, so this is a fairly straightforward, um, very similar in form to the contract that was signed, uh, by the board for the week that I served, the brief but exciting week that I served as interim while we were waiting to get Bob on board. Um, Bob has reviewed the contracts. He's comfortable with the provisions. It's been reviewed, uh, been reviewed by Labor Council as well, um, and has been approved as deformed. I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but, um, just very happy and excited to have Bob on board and we spent a lot of time together today, and I think that, uh, we'll, we'll work very well together moving forward. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. I think so too.
Excellent. Questions or comments from the board? All right, we're speeding through things tonight. This is great. Um, I had, I had no questions or comments either. I'm just very happy to have, have you join us. Uh, is there a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the employment agreement with Robert Reed for interim town administrator services.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Now it's official, Bob. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So obviously, this will be something that would, uh, by the town offices in the next couple of days to sign. Um, and next to one or?
If I might, I would just want to thank Becca. She made the, uh, whole process very, uh, quick and painless.
Yay.
Yes, yeah, I, I was gonna, during my reports, I was gonna thank Becca, but I'll do it now that, um, it, it was a very important week that you served as our, our, uh, interim town administrator and this continuation of services that, uh, that, that you offered to the town is, is great. We're, uh, very happy to have you here.
Thank you, and I, I do appreciate the board being expeditious and, and finding an interim. Uh, it's, uh, much needed. We've got a lot going on and I'm, I'm really excited to be working with Bob, so thank you.
Likewise.
Great. Um, all right, next up is, uh, discussion and vote to release ARPA funds for insurance costs following the reacquisition of Four West Main Street, AKA the old Town Hall. Um, Beck, I'll put you on the spot again if that's all right to, and you, you did a little bit of research for this.
So, um, I provided a memo to the board, um, it's included in the packet and up on the web, but, um, as the board is aware, the town anticipates, um, taking back, uh, the Old Town Hall for West Main Street on or about May second. Um, as part of the reacquisition of that space, uh, we need to secure, um, insurance, uh, on that asset. Um, and given the timing of your upcoming meeting schedule, the anticipated closing date, um, as well as the fact that there are, there are no funds appropriated for these insurance costs in either, in either the F Y twenty-three budget or proposed as part of the F Y twenty-four budget. Uh, so I am making the request to the board this evening, um, that you vote to release ARPA funds, uh, in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars, which is the proposal we received from the insurance company to fully cover for West Main Street for one year, uh, while the town investigates potential opportunities for that building moving forward, namely with the feasibility study for Town Hall, uh, in concert with the downtown revitalization project. Happy to take questions.
Thanks, Jason.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, no objection to this, but I just wanted to point out, we have skipped past the, uh, screening committee, uh, item on the agenda to move to this item, I believe.
That is totally my fault. That was not intentional.
So just to get the public aware.
I saw, I saw town administrator into things and they blended together in my eyes. Thank you for catching me on this. After this item, we will go back to that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Julianne?
So, so I, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, but do we have cell towers up, up on that building? And are we, if we do, are we getting any revenue?
I'm happy to answer that if you'd like through the chair. Um, yeah, so there are currently cell towers, uh, cell towers, antennas, not really towers, on the top of Four West Main Street. Um, there's also currently a tenant, um, in the, the, the building. Um, and both the cell tower company and the tenant are interested in pursuing, um, a lease extension following the reacquisition, um, by the town. So that's something that's currently being worked out with council. Um, I anticipate that in the next month or so, there will be an item before the board to consider those leases. Um, as a result, the town will be able to, um, collect those fees from those lease agreements to be used towards the maintenance of the building. Um, but, uh, it certainly won't cover the full cost of the insurance price tag. Um, and there'll be some additional, uh, maintenance, um, and carrying costs that the town will have to consider as, as part of taking back that building. Um, so there's a likelihood that those funds may be used towards that, but certainly won't cover both the carrying cost and the insurance cost.
So will you, if, if, if you expect some extra carrying cost, will you come to us and we can potentially set aside some funds for that? So.
Yeah, we're still, um, we don't have the details yet of the current lease agreement, so we're not sure how much, um, is being, uh, spent by those leaseholders. Um, and so as we move closer to a closing date, um, and we work with the current owner and council, we'll start to get a better idea of what the maintenance costs are, um, what we have for potential revenue coming in and any funds that we may need to request from the board moving forward.
Good. Thank you, Becca.
Julianne, any other questions, comments? Scott?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mister Chair, and, and Becca, you mentioned it, that once, once we, um, have the ability to get into the building and assess its condition, then we'll, we'll have a better feel for its maintenance costs, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And then in a related note, um, how are we doing in terms of coverage for carrying costs for White Cliffs?
Uh, I'm, uh, through the chair, if you'd like.
If, if you haven't.
My understanding from speaking with D P W Director, um, is that we have, uh, funding in the current, um, allocation to cover approximately through the early fall, um, so to get us through the summer months. Uh, so, uh, as we move forward with the White Cliffs process, that will be part of the discussion, um, with respect to whatever decision the board makes moving forward.
Okay, I, I just wanted to check. It was my understanding that the, uh, initial appropriation for White Cliffs was, was running out soon. All right, thanks. No other questions?
Okay, questions or comments on this item? I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move the board vote to release ARPA funds in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars for insurance costs following the reacquisition of Four West Main Street.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Julianne. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Becca, thank you very much for bringing this forward to us. Um, previous on our agenda is, uh, uh, discussion and vote on town administrator screening committee. So at, um, a last special meeting, um, we went round and round trying to build consensus on, um, on a makeup of a committee. I think we were, we were really close, but we were just running long. So we decided to postpone. So, um, in the draft motions that I sent out to the board a couple hours ago, I included what I thought was, um, pretty close to roughly where we were. Um, you know, plus or minus, um, so this, this is just a starting point for discussion. Um, one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Planning Board, one member of either the K to eight or regional school committees, one member of appropriations or, or the financial planning committee. Um, and we, we had discussed a number of options for, um, you know, how many of members of the public, but to keep to a seven-member board, three members of the public. Um, my suggestion is if we go with something like this, we just keep it simple and let, let each of the chairs figure out how to do the appointments. Um, we, we would, we should honor those and just use our standard appointment process for the three or whatever number we settle on for, uh, for the at-large members, members of the public. But I'm, I'm open to any, any thoughts. Kristen?
So, um, we, I just lost that page where you were writing that, but anyway, um, I have it in my head. So we had talked, I remember at the last meeting, um, you had said you were inclined that the North Row School Committee might be better than the regional, and I thought about that, and I saw on this, you put both school committees and they should pick, and I really think that should be the way it happens because if you think about it, if it's people who've lived in town for a while, they've had experience with all the levels of school, if they're on the regional committee, so, um, that seemed to make sense, but I do agree that, you know, just tell the two chairs you all figured out. Um, and then the other piece that I had been advocating for was that someone from the D E I B committee should be um, a high priority. So I would say that we should choose someone, so of the three remaining spots, I think, um, we should at least give the D E I B committee members, uh, first dibs at one of those spots, and if none of them can do it, then there's the the high school, I believe, has an equity committee. Maybe we could reach out to them if, if we really can't get anyone because it's not super great timing or whatever, like I understand, but I would like us to do our absolute best to get somebody, um, from one of those two committees, in particular, our own D E I B committee.
So I think what you're suggesting is not to formally say it must be a member of that committee, but as part of the normal interview committee process, um, reach out to them and encourage someone to apply and, and move them through that process.
I'm not really sure. I would like the other board members to weigh in on that. I'm not sure the best way to handle that, actually, but.
Sure. Any other, other thoughts from board members either on Kristen's idea or anything else related to the topic? Julianne?
So the first question that comes to mind is, um, has, has the D E I B committee, you know, we voted a while ago to have it be a permanent committee, had, um, have they met and are they, you know, are they, where, where do we stand with that?
Becca, you might be the best person to answer that.
Oh, I'm happy to. Yeah, they have met. Um, and, uh, you know, they are aware that the board, that, that a new town administrator is, um, that would, that the town is seeking a new town administrator, so they are aware that that process is, um, beginning. Uh, but we haven't had, there have been no formal discussions about that process by the committee, by the D E I B committee, but we have met and talked about other business related to the committee.
So, so I think Kristen's suggestion about, you know, if, if D E I B meets and they, they have someone who's even had experience in this kind of search, um, that makes, that makes perfect sense. It's to, to have them, um, you know, apply as one of the three at-large members. But I, can I ask another question while I have the floor?
Of course.
Um, is this, is this going to be a committee that goes through the interview subcommittee and then to the board?
My suggestion, the, the way I wrote this up, is that the three at-large members would go through that process, but the, um, the four, including this board, um, would be chair appointments that we would, we, we would have to endorse when we, um, you know, when we formally named the full committee, but, um, I, my opinion is we let the planning board figure out how, how they want to allocate somebody and, and who that would be as well as the school committees, as well as the, the two financial-related committees.
Okay.
And I, I don't think that they should go through the interview committee process. Jason?
Uh, yeah, a couple of observations. One is, um, for the cases of the K to eight or regional and for appropriations or financial planning, I think it would make sense to designate, uh, K to eight and appropriations as kind of like the authority for finalizing the decision, just so there's no confusion about, uh, you know, what the respective roles of the committee. I think appropriations membership is probably a little broader and representative compared to the financial planning committee. And, uh, and K to eight, I guess, in a sense, being more tightly coupled to the municipal budget, um, uh, as opposed to the regional school system where it's, uh, a little, uh, removed. I, I think the K to eight and the appropriations committees perhaps, uh, as a first option or right of first refusal to, uh, to designate, uh, who from their committees would, uh, be the participants, and then if circumstances work out that it's somebody from regional or somebody from financial planning instead, then that decision can carry forward, but I would suggest that K to eight and appropriations be kind of granted the authority to make the final determination.
Uh, I mean, I'd agree that it may make sense for the chairs of those two committees to sort of be the appointing person. Um, I don't think I want to say that one committee is, is higher priority than the other for membership in this, but, um, you know, as, yeah, I guess if we appointed both chairs equally of, say, K to eight and regional and they disagreed, then you need a tiebreaker, and I think I agree, it makes sense for the K to eight chair and the appropriations chair to, to be the person to send us a letter that says, please appoint so-and-so. Um, but they could choose that so. Um, but they could choose that so-and-so from among the joint membership of each of those committee sets.
Yeah. And then, uh, the second point, uh, is just that, uh, for the three members of the public who are appointed, I would um, suggest not to include in that membership, uh, members of the public who are foreseeably going to join this board or other boards, um, and not, uh, through, you know, some notion of grandfathering continue, uh, in the process, uh, um, after having, uh, joined the boards, I think. It's important to keep the representation of each of those designated boards at one and to make the three public members, uh, you know, more broadly representative as possible. And to Kristen's point, I think, uh, you know, uh, certainly can communicate to, you know, to other boards and committees such as DEIB. Um, you know, if there are, if they are interested, then, you know, perhaps there'll be some additional weight in consideration of those applicants for one of those three spots. So, um, I, I wouldn't be, you know, I wouldn't object to that at all. I don't know that I necessarily earmarked a spot for that, but I certainly would, you know, give it significant consideration if someone came forward from, from that committee or perhaps per, from a couple of others.
Thanks, Jason. Kristen, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to follow up on what I had been saying earlier. Um, and so a question for Becca. Does the timing work? Um, like, when is the next DEIB committee meeting?
They meet on the first Monday of the month typically, um, but certainly if I, I could request that they meet a, another time.
So they just met April third?
They didn't meet April third because I had to attend a meeting of the board.
Right.
The board had a special meeting that evening, so they didn't have a meeting. But, um, certainly if you needed them to make an appointment to the screening committee, I, I'm, I'm sure that they would be more than happy to schedule a meeting outside of their regular schedule to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if they could do that soon this month, then, um, because what's our, um, how? I mean, if then
We'll get, we'll get to the timing in a minute.
Interview committee, like, it's gonna be a little while. So I know the, he, there, they sent us a letter, but I don't remember seeing this nitty gritty in there.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll talk about the timing in a second. I'm gonna i- i- suggest that we don't need these boards to meet and vote on applicants. I think this is more administrative in nature. I think if the chair of, I'm not even sure who the chair is of diversity committee, um, or Becca, you wanted to reach out to, um, to a couple of members and just gauge interest, um, or just encourage interest, you know, the, particularly with this committee, it's appointment to one of the at-large positions. So, um, it's not a, a chair appointment like the others. If we end up getting two members of that committee to apply, that's great. We may, you know, you, the interview committee may choose to only select one of them. Um, so I, I, in other words, I don't think it's necessary for the committee to meet just for this purpose. But I'll leave, I'll leave that up to, um, Becca and the diversity committee to, to sort out how they want to go about this. Kristen, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, sure. I, I believe Miriam is the chair and, um, I, I, I think that makes sense to have Becca talk to them and they should decide for themselves. Yeah, sure. I'm flexible. I just, I really wanted to, you know, advocate for that and, um, and so the interview committee process takes a little while too, so.
Yeah, the, for, for timing, um, this is something that we should probably move along somewhat expeditiously, that I believe our policy is that, um, positions be open for fifteen days, advertised for fifteen days. Oftentimes we've done it longer. Um, but I think that, you know, maybe the interview committee could set up a meeting for, you know, two and a half to three weeks out, and then, um, we meet um, as soon as possible thereafter, so that we can at least have that committee in place for, uh, for, I forget exactly what the timing is also. For ju- just to meet and organize and get to know each other, meet Bob and Buzz, who will be very involved, or, or search consultants in that process and, um, and be ready once applications come in. Bob, I don't know if you had, uh, any, any other insight into, into the timing process. I know you and I spoke very briefly about it. Um, and if you have no insight, uh, on this, given that this is your first day and you've only been appointed a few minutes, that's okay.
Well, only that, um, I guess I have a couple of questions. What, what is your, uh, process, solicitation process for the at-large members?
So we have, um, uh, in a standing interview committee of which, uh, Kristen and Julianne are currently the members of. And so, um, so after, again, I'm almost certain that our policy is at least fifteen days. Sometimes we leave it at longer. Um, that they would then interview all applicants. And then they would vote on a recommendation to this board on who they felt would, should be appointed. And then it would be up to this board to meet and actually make the appointments.
So that's fifteen days, what, on the website?
Fif- yeah, fifteen days advertisement on the website.
Okay. So, um, just my thought is, we did get a preliminary schedule from MRI. Uh, as you may know, they've already advertised in the MMA website and hope to have in all, well, they've set a deadline of May eighth, which I guess is gonna be your next regular meeting, considering town meeting is coming up. Um, Bob did mention in the timeline that he was hoping to have input back from the town administrator search committee on both the community profile that they're putting together and, uh, also some other documents that they're putting together, um, by the eighth. So, um, and I know things got awfully rushed. Everything's getting pretty rushed, plus, uh, town meeting complicates things, but obviously, um, even if you were to have a special meeting, I mean, I don't know when the school committee is gonna be meeting or how soon they'd be able to forward someone, but um, I would just say it's kind of looking doubtful that, uh, those timelines are gonna be met as far as certainly any task, town administrator search committee involvement prior to May eighth. Uh, it looks like they'll probably be appointed May eighth.
You know, that might be, end up being the case. Um, yeah, my, my expectation is that the chairs of those committees would, would name people so that they wouldn't need to have, um, have a committee. I think in, in most committees in town, the chairs of the committees make appointments to to relevant committees from within their midst. So I don't think any of them would need to meet. They may opt to. That's up to them. So.
Thinking out loud, I mean, the, I had been thinking about possibly a special meeting, maybe doing appointments prior to town meeting, but I mean, it is what it is. This is, this is what I'm learning is Northborough's process. If your process is fifteen days, plus the subcommittee, then that won't, that won't help. So it looks like the date is the A.
Yeah, I think probably the fastest we could do it is about three weeks, which would take us to around a week, week and a half prior. Um, my suggestion is, is we, assuming we can come to an agreement on the formation of this committee tonight. We advertise tomorrow, set the deadline at fifteen days after that. Um, and then the interview committee would take it from there and, and, you know, we could set up um, schedule a meeting immediately after the interview committee meeting to, to move it along as quickly as possible. We can do what we can do. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Are folks okay with, um, with this arrangement as proposed with, um, with the suggestions that both Kristen and Jason has, have put out? Julianne?
So are the suggestions part of the motion or is it just an understood that?
I think it's just understood.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to establish a town administrator screening committee to consist of the following membership. One member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Planning Board, one member of the K through eight or regional school committees. One member of the appropriations or financial committee and three members of the public.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We have a screening committee. Excellent. Thank you. And moving back.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Mitch, do you officially appoint yourself?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted everyone to know.
Yes. Yeah, I, I, I think it came up during, during our last meeting that I anticipated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have some, somebody watching and just.
Okay. Thanks. Um, let's see, we've done the ARPA vote. Uh, next up, discussion and vote on appointments to the town offices feasibility study committee. Um, just to, uh, to catch everyone up, we had four um, people that former town administrator, it's hard to say that, former town administrator, John Cadare, um, has, uh, had appointed and we are up to, it's our job to confirm. Um, since our last meeting, one of them, Fran Baxton, has withdrawn, uh, from consideration, but the other three remain. Um, and, um, so that's, that's where we are. We did get, uh, additional information that the board requested in our packet for tonight. So the, the applications and, and relevant details to all of the applicants. Not just the three that are up for consideration tonight, um, which I, I want to thank, um, Becca, I imagine you were the one who put that together. So thank you that uh, that it resolved my concerns regarding the appointments. Um, any other, uh, questions or comments? From anyone before we continue?
Well.
Yeah.
Have a question about what you're asking. So.
Sure.
Questions or comments about, like, are we starting the discussion part of this now?
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's no, there's, yeah, there's no, no motion yet, but I, I wanted to see if there was it, it, for example, did this resolve the concerns that some of the board members expressed last time about, um, about the appointment process? Um, we didn't have the, the information. We didn't know who the other applicants were, which was, some people were requesting. People ready to, to make some decisions on this or anything else?
Um, oh, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, Julianne had her hand up first.
So, um, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing to try to make a decision about this tonight, but I do, I do feel that the information we got was very helpful and probably helpful enough to make a decision, but it didn't seem very standardized. Some people filled out an application, some people didn't. Um, some people had a letter of interest, some people didn't, and, and there was no information about the you know, the rationale that, that John used to choose the people that he, that he decided to move forward. So, um, as I said, you know, I, I, it's not a, a, a perfect, a perfect scenario, and maybe in the future we can work on, on making that a little more clear, but, um, it is what we have right now. So, so I guess we have to move forward.
Just on that, I, I think it's a deficiency on the part of the board that we don't have a policy as to expectations and process for this. This is very different than our normal appointments. These are appointments per the charter that the town administrator makes, and our job is to confirm, uh, or potentially to not confirm. Um, but we don't have another role in that, but setting expectations as far as perhaps the process that the town administrator follow. Uh, and for the information that we get to make our decisions may make some sense. Uh, that was not set, set formally prior to tonight, although when we did the, um, the fire station building committee, um, we did set some expectations then and, and I think now, now at this point, they've been followed here, uh, with the packet tonight. But I, I think in, somewhere near in the future, we should have that discussion and, uh, and put that in writing. So, uh, whether it be Bob for any committees that need to get formed over the next few months that he's with us or for whoever follows him. Um, that e- everyone's on the same page and there are no surprises. Um, Scott, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I guess my question is, given that these are appointments to be made by town administration, um, and with the redraw, withdrawal, uh, of Fran for the reasons that she cited in her memo to us or her email to us. Um, Bob or Becca, do you have then someone you would, uh, uh, offer as the fourth position for, for that appointment? Or you've had a chance to have that discussion to make a decision?
I, I don't have one yet, no.
Yeah, I think it's perfectly fine of us if we, if, if we as a board choose to appoint the three that are remaining from that initial appointment or, uh, confirm those three, um, and then give Bob the opportunity to, um, to name an additional member or potentially multiple additional members. There's no fixed size for these committees. So that's up to, to Bob now, our interim administrator, to make a decision as to how large he'd like this committee to be and who he'd like to have on it. So really, our, our only thing to do tonight is, is potentially confirm those three.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen?
So, um, I mean, since I don't know, does it make sense to just let Bob look at these applications and, um, interview these people? Cause a lot of these people never even got an interview. Some of them never even got a response that their information had been received and that kind of thing. Um, and I'm hoping moving forward, we can be better with that kind of communication and invitation to, yes, Northborough's a town where we like people to be involved and we love it when people volunteer. Um, so could we just let him?
Yeah, my, my thought is we should consider the confirmation of these three tonight so that they're not hanging out any further. Um, and I mean, they've been duly appointed pending confirmation, um, and we have the backup information. Um, you know, potentially we could not confirm one or all of them. I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm fine with all three. Um, and then we let Bob, uh, take it from there.
We're fine with that. I, I mean, if, um, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, so I, I didn't realize that there wasn't like a size for this committee, so that was my follow-up comment. Um, so I mean, everyone could be on it potentially or something. I don't, I have no idea how big a com- committee like this should be. So I guess I'm gonna stop talking and let Bob say what he was gonna say.
No, I was only gonna say I agree with what the chair has said. I mean, if they're John's appointments, uh, or recommend appointments, that's good enough for me. I, uh, will be looking into the remaining applicants, um, talking to staff. I, I welcome input from the board as well and making a decision on the, on the remaining appointment.
Okay, so that's your question, Kristen?
Okay, yeah, so I guess it would just be one more person. Okay.
Could be, yeah, again, it could be one more, or if, if Bob wanted to have a seven-person committee, it could be three more. You know, there'd be one, one member of this board also on that.
I just, I hadn't realized so many people had sent in a letter of interest for it, and one of the applicants that John chose didn't send a letter of interest or we didn't get it. Um, so, uh, it was just a resume. So it's hard to know if that was actually someone who was really interested and not a mistake, which I assume it wasn't. And then how do we like, uh, what in particular, there was nothing in the resume that made me think oh, this person would be perfect for this committee either. So, um, uh, uh, that I was really um, confused by that. And I thought there, uh, the rest of them either had a letter, eh, a very short letter, a lot of them, saying, you know, I'm interested in maybe a brief, excuse me, statement why. And then some of them did the actual, um, BCC application, which was really nice, cause that gives them an opportunity to give a lot of information. So anyway, there were quite a few people and a lot of them seem very qualified. And, um, I'm, I'm a little frustrated that some of the people who have been tapped already don't seem like the most qualified, frankly.
Yeah. As I said, this is a different process than the appointments that we make. Um, it is up to the town administrator, who is now a different town administrator, um, to make to make appointments, and it's our job to say yes or no. Um, and I, I do think there's ample reason to think we can, we can set some policy. To set the expectations for the process. Um, I was very disappointed to hear that not all the applicants were interviewed. That's, you know, because we haven't set a policy about it, that's the right of the administrator to decide how he or she deals with it. I think proper process would have been to interview all equally and then make decisions, but that's just kind of where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Julian?
So, um, but I think I would feel most comfortable. Knowing that we are going to increase the number of people on this committee because. Of the applicants who were not chosen by, by the previous town administrator. One has had experience in, in building out space for his, um. For his company and that's, that's a huge asset. Another person has experience in real estate, which is another big asset. Another person has experience in working on teams and intensively. And I think, uh, you know, all, all of the other candidates bring something special to the table and. I'd like to see the, the, the town hall feasibility committee expand to. One member of the Board of Selectmen and six at-large citizens.
So that's, uh, uh, Jason, that has a, that's up to Bob at this point, Jason.
If I'm not mistaken, that's basically a determination to be made by the town administrator at the time he's forming the committee and making the appointments. So whatever. The preferences of these members of the board would like, uh, isn't really relevant at this point. Um, for the purpose we're here for tonight, which is to either approve or not approve the recommendations.
I, I agree with what, what you're saying, Julian. I think I agree that might be. Uh, it might be good to have a little bit more breadth on this particular committee. Um, my suggestion would be maybe have a one-on-one conversation with Bob. As, as he's the appointing authority for this at this point, um, and then if he so chooses can come back. And, um, and make three additional appointments instead of one. Any other questions or comments? Julian?
Well, I just, I just wanna, um, kind of emphasize my point and Jason, I understand where you're coming from completely. But given, given the talents that the people who are not chosen have. That the people who were chosen don't have. I mean, we really never, we never really understood. And I think that's the problem is, is, is the rationale for why John chose the people he chose. Because, you know, that he may know something about those candidates that, that we just don't know.
Jason?
Yes, um, it may be that that's the case that the town administrator has additional insights or information or perspectives in. Choosing from the available candidates. Julian, you mentioned that one applicant who wasn't selected. Uh, has background in real estate. While, while that is true. It appears to be a background in residential real estate, not commercial, not industrial, not municipal buildings. So. Uh, while there might be some relevant experience there, it's not necessarily, uh, obvious, uh, you know, experience that, that applies in this particular case. So what, once again, um. By our charter, this is a committee that's formed under the authority of the town administrator. Who has the, uh, discretion to, uh, to consider candidates and recommend appointments. And it's simply the purpose of this board to approve or not approve those recommendations.
I, I agree with Jason. I think you're making very good, very good points about a process for. For almost all appointments that we deal with. Um, in this case, this is just a, this is a different kind. Jason?
Yeah, just as a final note, I point out that the previous town administrator had. Very successful municipal building construction projects for the, uh, library expansion, the senior center and Lincoln Street School. Uh, all of those had feasibility and building committees associated with them. So, uh, based on the success of those projects, I don't have any. Qualms about who's being brought forward now for this feasibility committee.
Okay, um, so the only actions before us tonight are three votes on the three. Candidates for confirmation. Are we ready to start that process?
But just to be clear, um. It will be left to Mr. Reed to decide. Um, if he wants to fill one more position or additional positions.
Correct, that by our charter, that's. That's it. Um, and I, I'd encourage you to, I'd encourage you to have a meeting with Bob anyway, as, as all of us should. But, um, you know, ma- make your case there.
Okay. We'll meet.
Excellent. All right. Are we ready to take some votes? All right.
I, I was just gonna say, I move the board vote to approve. The town administrator's appointment of Ashley Davies to the town offices feasibility study committee.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Jason. Um, all those in favor, Kristen?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julian?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, Ashley. Next up.
Mr. Chair, I move with the board vote to approve the town administrator's appointment of Aaron Hutchins to the town offices feasibility study committee.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julian?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, Aaron.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I move the board vote to approve the town administrator's appointment of Linda Brinkel to the town offices feasibility study committee.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott. All those in favor, Julian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations to the three members of the, uh, of this committee. And, um, and Bob's got some work to do already. Next up on our agenda. We have vote on reappointments to boards, committees and commissions. Becca, perhaps you can give us a, a quick start on this? I know this is an annual process.
Um, so on an annual basis, uh, the, uh, minister assistant, executive assistant Diane will send out a notice. To all, uh, members of boards and committees who have expiring terms to find out whether or not they're interested in serving. Again, there's been a short, um. Advertisement period where resumes are collected. Um, this is the, uh, twenty twenty-three reappointment list. For the board's consideration, uh, with the list of committees, um, and the members for consideration of a pro-appointment.
Kristen? You are muted.
I didn't even ask if you, uh, I mean, I didn't wait for you to say, are there any questions? But I'm hoping that's what you were about.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. Um, so are we to assume that no one else has applied to be on any of these boards or committees?
That's my understanding. If they had, they, we would delay the appointment and there would be a process by which the interview subcommittee would go through if that were the case.
Okay, thank you.
I will point out that my name is on the list of library trustees up for reappointment. As a, a mass, uh, appointment, if you will, a mass motion that's, uh, considered fine in, in past practices and. Um, in years past, I think, um, for me to vote on that, if anyone has any concerns, I'll withdraw my name from that and we can vote on, on my name separately.
I'm okay with that.
No concerns.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move as a board vote to reappoint those individuals. Who appear on the twenty twenty-three reappointment list to the corresponding boards, committees and commissions.
Second.
Motion made by Julian, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Uh, Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Uh, thank you very much to Di in the office for, uh, for putting this together. I know this is a lot of work every year. Um, and I'll bet at least half of the people don't respond by the, uh, by the date that she's requested. So she follows up with a lot of people. To make sure we get the main list. I also wanna, um, thank those, uh, few who chose not to be reappointed for their, uh, their time and service to the town. And there's their various committees. And, uh, we have a few new vacancies that will open up the interview committee for, um, next up we have. Uh, assignment of town meeting warrant articles, or do we have, and then recommendations after that? So, um, we have, whether it was included in the packet or, or by separate email from Becca. A list of all of the articles for town meeting with some nice color-coded, um, pay attention to the green box items. For motions, um, we can go through those tonight or we, you can just. I would say, does anyone have any that they're particularly interested in making the motions for? Let's start it that way. Uh, Jason?
Uh, yes, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, um. Uh, as I look through these, I see that we have, I think, a total of twenty-four. And of those twenty-four, four of those are listed as being consent agenda. So my suggestion would be to just kind of take those aside.
Yeah.
Uh, if anyone are held out during town meeting, just have the chair make those motions, um, as a continued.
Think of the same.
Yeah, and then second, uh, because this is my last town meeting, there are a few articles that, uh, just for symbolic reasons. I guess I would request to be able to make the motions for.
As, as long as Scott doesn't want to fight you for it.
Yeah, okay, great. Uh, that'd be number twelve stabilization fund. Just as a reflection of, uh. Conservative town financial budgeting principles.
Sure.
Uh, number fifteen, uh, police cruiser replacements for the capital improvement plan. That kind of ties back to my service on financial planning committee in the institution of the, uh. Cash policy to, uh, make certain capital purchases using free cash and avoid additional tax burden through debt assurances. Uh, number eighteen, which is also capital improvement plan, uh, road improvements and maintenance. Is during my tenure on financial planning and transition to Board of Selectmen that, uh. We first did the study of the roads, uh, with a consultant to assess the condition and index, if you will, of the roads and. Began doing a formal, uh, pavement, uh, management plan. And then finally, uh, I won't be participating in the process for the selection of the new town manager. But I would ask to make the motion for article twenty-eight, which is remove the residency requirement for town administrator, which I think is a. Key requirement to attract the best possible candidates for the position.
Excellent. I, I have no concerns with, uh, Jason, you doing those. Sure. Um, does anyone else have any, uh, any particular favorites that they'd like? Kristen?
I would love to read article twenty-six. The select board one.
Twenty.
Isn't that twenty-six or is that?
Twenty-seven, I think. Twenty-seven on my list.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Um, yes. Um, yeah, article twenty-seven. I had just written down, um, twenty-four to twenty-nine, but Jason wants twenty-eight. So then I tried to be specific and I missed out. So, um. Yeah, could I, so I would like to read that one. Um, and I would be happy to do, there was a few before it that if no one else wanted. And also, I would like to do that one, but I would defer to Julianne, who has probably been fighting that fight longer than I have. And I would also just be happy to, you know, cheer her from the background if she wants to read it.
No, 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 go for it, Kristen. You brought it home, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, my, my thinking is that everyone choose the ones that they want and I'll just assign out, um, those, uh, you know, sometime after.
Okay.
Yeah, the other ones that, um, that aren't, you know, favorites.
Twenty-seven for me.
Okay, all yours. Um, Scott or Julianne, do you have any favorites? Scott?
Yeah, I g- I guess Mitch would be, um, anti-favorites if you could not assign me to seventeen or twenty.
I'm sorry, see seventeen.
Seventeen is the fire engine replacement. Twenty is the DPW tight tank.
Understood.
Other than that, uh, phasing in what makes sense in terms of sequencing to avoid swaps back and forth within a, you know. Make it can, uh, um, continuous or whatever, you know, get, get as many back to back as possible.
Yeah, just, just for expedience sake. Um, okay, any, any particular favorites? Scott, you know?
Oh, not by me. Uh, uh, affinity for the other capital planning ones, that's, 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 that's good for me, but wherever it makes sense to best fit in.
Okay, Jason?
Uh, the similar, uh, similar sentiment, I would prefer not to be assigned. I, I've already selected four. I think it's basically four per member, but. Yeah, I, I would prefer not to be selected for seventeen and twenty. Thank you.
Understood, yeah, won't happen. Thanks. Um, Julianne, do you have any favorites or anti-favorites?
No anti-favorites. I'll take seventeen and twenty. Um, and I would like to do sixteen. Painting of the police station. Uh, but I think Mitch, um, you really helped us with the senior tax relief, so you would probably want that one.
I'm very interested in that one, yeah. Okay. Okay, um, all right, so I'll go ahead and, um, put together the list and send that around to everybody. Sometime after tonight's meeting and, um. And if anyone has any comments afterwards, you can let me know on those. Okay? We don't need any motions. Tonight, because we'll be making those motions at town meeting. Next up, we have discussion and vote on town meeting warrant article recommendations. So, um, Becca had put together, um, a list of articles that we may want to consider recommendations on. That she forwarded to me and the draft motions, which I forwarded out to everybody else. I added to that, as I, as I mentioned in that email, um, article twenty-six, the thirteen church street easement. Um, that the board has been pretty involved in that process, so we may want to make a recommendation on that one as well. And I'm certainly open for, for anything else and we can de- deal with these as a group. Or if anyone wanted to take anything individually, we could do that too. Open for comments, suggestions, ideas. Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. In addition to the K to eight and, uh, Algonquin Regional School, high school budgets, which we make recommendations on. I think just for completeness, we would also, uh. Make a recommendation for Assabet.
Oh.
Yeah, good, good call.
Yeah.
Which article is that? Oh, eight.
Any other articles that anyone would like to consider a recommendation on? Okay, so I'll, I'll read the, the list and then someone, if they want to, can say recommend as, as stated. Article four town budget, article five water sewer enterprise funds, article six K to eight school committee, school budget. Article seven, Northborough, Southborough, school budget, article eight, the Assabet budget, article fourteen, senior tax relief. Article twenty-six thirteen church street easement, article twenty-seven, change name of Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Article twenty-eight, remove residency requirement for town administrator. Okay? We don't even have a draft motion on that. Would someone like to make a motion to recommend those articles?
So moved. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Those will be our recommendations, uh, for completeness sake, I trust there are none. Would anyone like to make any motions or have any discussions about, about the board opposing any articles? Hearing none, great. Okay. Um, next up, we have a proclamation regarding Children's Mental Health Week, which is May seventh to thirteenth. Would someone like to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to issue a proclamation proclaiming as proclamations do, the week of May seventh through May thirteenth as Children's Mental Health Week.
Second.
I could read the proclamation, too.
Sure, if you would uh.
Um, we got a nice note from Pam Sager, who happens to be from Westboro, who works for a nonprofit. Um, she's the executive director of Parent Professional Advocacy League. And this is a nationally celebrated mental health week, and they're a- asking each town and city in Massachusetts to make it um that week, Children's Mental Health Week in the in the town as well. So this is what it says. Whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a men- mental health condition, and whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development. And Children's Mental Health Week cha- shines the light on this important matter. And whereas research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health conditions among children and youth and the involvement of family members in their care and treatment provide children and youth better opportunities for full and meaningful lives. And whereas early identification and treatment includes timely services and supports for children and youth from a fully integrated team of diverse resources, including their families, physicians, schools, and local communities. And whereas appropriate treatment is family-driven, youth-guided, culturally appropriate, and equitable across varying communities and populations. And whereas appropriately treating the mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of our nation and to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now therefore, the town of Northborough does hereby proclaim May seventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Children's Mental Health Week, and urge our citizens, businesses, and organizations to promote this year's theme. Accept, advocate, act, because awareness is not enough in order to help increase equitable access to appropriate treatment and support for children, youth, and their families with mental health needs.
Kristen? Um, let's see, we did have a motion and second on this, correct? Kristen, then Scott. Uh, any other discussion? I really appreciate this thing, and thank you, Kristen, for for reading the entirety of it. Um, all those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I also vote I voted as unanimous in favor. We have proclaimed. Um, next up on our agenda, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Jason.
Uh, I think we need to step back to item twelve, which is setting the meeting schedule.
Why am I doing this tonight? I I thank you, everybody, for catching me on this. Uh, set the meeting schedule for potentially May through August. So there are some dates um in the draft motions. I think they're in the uh packet as well. May eighth and twenty-second and May, uh, June twelfth and twenty-sixth would be our normal uh second and fourth meeting dates. Um, and then the tradition of this board is during the summer to have one meeting per month, July and August, so that would be July seventeenth and August fourteenth. Uh, did anyone have any uh anything to to offer on that? Julianne?
So um, as Becca mentioned earlier, we have a lot of work to do, and I I would recommend that we vote on the May and June schedule um tonight and and as we progress through the months, figure out if we need to have two meetings in July and two meetings in August. There's a lot on our plate and um especially if we're gonna do a fall town meeting potentially, there's it's, I I hesitate to just say one meeting in July and August right now.
Jason?
Um, it's always problematic in the summer with vacations, not only for board members, but for staff members. Um, after a long uh spring leading through town meeting in preparation for the new fiscal year, so my suggestion at this point would perhaps be to approve the single dates for now in July and August, and then uh if additional meetings are needed, then schedule that when more information is available from all the participants to see what makes sense for a date.
My other related thought is, we know there will be two new members uh on this board in a month. Um, and I, you know, we should probably account for for their schedules when thinking about um, you know, things during the summer. I could go, I could go either way. Um, I I agree, we should definitely set the May and June meetings now and either set the uh the July and August or or hold on them. Uh, Jason?
I I just gonna suggest that to the extent that people, uh, board members and staff members have sufficient time to plan in advance, the two single dates in July and August are best to set now, and then as I said, additional meetings as people are able to to accommodate uh when you get closer to that period of time.
Yeah, I mean, I think in all likelihood, we will need some additional meetings, um, you know, June through August, but w- what dates those are, it's it's impossible to predict now. Becca, you have uh some insight for us?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that this is for regular business of the board, so obviously you all are going through recruitment process, and that's likely going to require some additional meetings, so um, we'll be flexible, but it like Jason mentioned, it's helpful for us to let folks know who wanna come to the board with something, hey, these are the dates that they're definitely gonna meet so that they can plan. Uh, a- and that's helpful for for staff in the office as well.
Yeah, that that makes a good point for anyone seeking licenses and so forth, that those have a few month lead time. They can target something. Julianne?
So to Becca's point, since we know that we're gonna have to meet about town administrator and feasibility committee and all of that, should we just set two meetings um in July? At least.
Think I I think it it's hard to predict when some of those would be needed. Um, you know, we have from the search consultants, we have some target dates for when things will occur. Things are gonna happen. Um, so it's hard to predict exactly, and there's a lot going on with White Cliffs, and if that's, I don't think any one of us could predict what's gonna happen with White Cliffs or when. I I'm, I think I'm inclined to agree with Jason that we should go ahead and set one meeting for July and August as our regular business meetings. Um, but I think everyone should I should uh understand and appreciate, there will be more meetings over the summer than a typical summer. We just don't know what form they'll be in. And if we have a lot of meetings, we can add another one and call that a regular meeting also and deal with regular business. Nothing precludes us from this. This is just putting a line in the sand that we will at least have these. Julianne?
Um, I'm sorry, I printed this out and the August date, it was cut off. What was the August date?
Fourteenth.
August fourteenth, okay, thank you.
But Julianne, I I do appreciate reminding everyone that it's gonna be a busy summer. Okay, um, any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to set the meeting scheduled from May through August as follows. May eighth and twenty-second, June twelfth and twenty-sixth, July seventeenth, and August fourteenth.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Now, unless I've missed something else, we're on to reports. Uh, let's see, Julianne, do you have any reports tonight?
Just a quick one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so April twenty-ninth looks like it's gonna be a busy day in town. Um, in addition to town cleanup, the cultural council is that will be opening day for their public art project, which is the um go outdoors. The um, the artists who ha- are painting the doors will be available that day from eleven to twelve, so mark your calendars for those two events. And um, just a reminder that town meeting is in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Uh, Scott, do you have any reports tonight?
Yeah, just a real quick, and I was a bit remiss in our last meeting, uh, being timely for a thank you to our uh members or our Muslim community that invited uh members from the select board. Uh, the school committee members and school administration, um, coach, um, community affairs committee and other other groups. I can't, I can't remember all of them, just that uh to celebrate with them uh and share their traditions uh with an iftar dinner. Uh, special thanks to the Rose who opened up their house for that team to meet and to conduct that event. Um, it was fantastic evening, lots of great conversation and fantastic food and um, uh, good, good, good friends and fellowship. So just wanted to thank everybody involved in that event. Um, it was, it was phenomenal. Uh, no other items to report.
Thank you, Scott. Kristen, any reports tonight?
Um, I just, well, yeah, we, um, just a short one that um I am excited, I guess, for town meeting on April twenty-fourth, and I hope everyone else is, too. Um, and I I have in in honor of um April being poetry month. Best month of the year, right, everybody? All you poetry fans out there, um, I have been posting a poem a day on my Facebook page. Um, my my selectman Facebook page, but hopefully I will have to change that title of that to select board member Facebook page soon. Anyway, I wrote, um, so I've been posting a poem a day that I wrote about Northborough, and there are certain style of poetry called tonka, and it's just a certain syllabic structure. Um, they don't have to rhyme, and um, I'm gonna share the one about town meeting, which will be posted on the twenty-fourth, but I'll read it to everybody today. And that's pretty much all my report. Um, so the poem is Town Meeting, Big Deal. We vote to fund fire trucks, plows, police zoning, school budget, dog park, White Cliffs. Yes, yes, you should go.
That's fantastic, Kristen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gotta put that on a sign next year. Um, Jason has requested to go after me tonight, so I'm uh gonna go through my reports very quickly. Um, uh, I want to say thank you to the family of uh Dot Dorothy Senical, who invited me to um her one-hundredth birthday party. Uh, that was um, that was a lot of fun. It was on April first, and uh, Dot is a longtime Northborough resident and uh is doing great, and uh, when I said that I was there from the the Board of Selectmen, she immediately said, oh, I'm ho- hope I'm paid up on my taxes. She's she's got a a very sharp wit. Uh, and uh, and I also learned that uh her son is a retired DPW member. Uh, was a longtime employee of the town for thirty-seven years, something like that. Um, the, I wanna say the the town meeting signs that uh town clerk put together uh look great, and I wanna thank Julianne for uh for for suggesting that. I think that's, that's a great thing. Um, I'll mention again, as uh has already been mentioned, the Louise Howl uh town cleanup is April twenty-second, and I wanna thank the Community Affairs Committee. Uh, one neat thing that they're doing this year is they bought uh with uh, I believe ARPA funds or B Well funds uh some uh trash pickups that uh that people can borrow for free. And um, to help with the cleanup, I've got a couple of those myself uh that I've had for years, and they really help with the process. Uh, and um, it was amazing to see that happen. We had an email from a resident whose name I'm forgetting um, eh, with some general trash pickup ideas, and uh a- and that turned into, well, how about we get these, and then uh Jemberno and Kristen Black got involved, and all of a sudden, I was just, I was just copied on emails that I had nothing to do with. Um, and all of a sudden, within a day or two, it had happened, and uh and they had bought those, and they're gonna be available for residents um uh for the town cleanup, and I suspect many the other times throughout the year. Um, and uh, as I mentioned earlier, I wanna thank uh Becca Meekins for an outstanding job in her week as our interim administrator and uh through the process thus far for um for the whole transition of the town administration office. And with that, that ends my report. Mr. Perrow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do appreciate the courtesy to speak last this evening. Since we did not customarily have a meeting before town election day, I had anticipated that this would be my last regular board meeting before town meeting, so I wanted to uh express some thanks for for a number of people um that I've worked with over the years. The voters who elected me to three terms in this position, uh, appreciate that support uh for friends and neighbors uh inside the zero one five three two zip code. Thank you all very much for your support. Also have a number of friends uh from outside the zip code who uh from time to time have understood that uh uh what I've been doing in town in in this role and uh have been very supportive. For town boarding committee members that I've worked with uh on this board and passports, uh, thank you all. I appreciate the work that you do, the time that you give up um to do this rather than some other things you could be doing. Um, it is uh a commitment that you need to make, and uh I certainly have benefited greatly from from the people that I've worked with and learned from over the years. Uh, for town staff members um over the years, uh, thank you all so very much. Uh, you're just been very, very exceptional to work with and uh um, certainly through the COVID era, uh extraordinary demands were placed upon you, and you answered the call. Uh, we got through the pandemic, uh I think in very good form, and a lot of it was due to your efforts to step up, put in extra time, take on additional responsibilities that you weren't required for your job description. Uh, and uh, and got us through, so thank you all very much uh for the support, for the assistance, for the expertise uh that you've provided for me. Uh, I wanna thank my three sons, Mark, Brian, and Scott, who attended Northborough Public Schools and uh from from elementary through high school and uh by all accounts, uh, say they were very, very well prepared for their college experience, academics and living, and also for their uh post-college experiences uh as adults in society. Um, they're just very appreciative of the school system. It's the reason we came to this town, and uh it it certainly served us very, very well. I wanna thank my wife Maggie. When we arrived in town, Maggie was quickly involved with some of the PTOs. Uh, in time, she got her teaching certification and taught math uh at Algonquin Regional High School for a number of years. Uh, retired last summer and now has continued to volunteer uh in different capacities with the senior center, with the library and and others, and uh I just thank her for uh all the um leeway to pursue what I was doing and the amount of time it took uh away from from our family for me to do that. And then uh also cannot cannot forget that my ninety-year-old mother, Dolly, who despite failing eyesight due to macular degeneration uh still puts in thirty minutes a day on her elliptical machine each morning and who's is still more than capable of kicking my butt whenever the occasion calls for it, so I uh I certainly thank her uh as well. Finally, uh just a special offering, uh, Krista and I had talked about uh doing a poem uh for my exit, and uh so I did uh probably doesn't have quite the same literary weight as some of the other offerings that she's presented, but uh I did my best and and we'll see how it turns out, so. Arrived in town in ninety-six and shortly after, in the mix by coaching sports, helped kids play right and scheduled Starhawks practice ice. Town meeting nights, election days, the two most fundamental ways we work to get our issues solved. That's what he did to get involved. A peacely parent was the need for school feasibility. He joined the group as last resort and edited that team's report. Next up was tax relief for the disabled and the elderly. A board was launched, he volunteered and led it for its first three years. Then on to guide the plan financial, helped get more grant that was substantial. Then on to guide the plan financial, helped get more grant that was substantial. New policies for cash and debt, so money would be better spent. And then the voters would elect him to the town's Board of Selectmen. First term in seat number five, to learn from those who were his guides. The next two terms, he's often chair. Who knew what issues would appear? It really didn't take long and brother, if not one thing, it was another. Support a marijuana ban, oppose a farming compost scam. Refigure all the budget lines to manage through pandemic times. Some other ways he lent a hand, a group to steer the master plan. The junior post-prom party beat, a school built on Lincoln Street. Had much respect for our town staff, professionals who know their craft. When every time they faced a test, they surely did what they do best. In ninety-six, did not foresee he'd spend a quarter century to serve a lengthy civic stint. But so he did. And then he didn't. Thank you, Mister Chair. That concludes my report.
Yeah.
That was beautiful.
It was fantastic, Jason. That, that really was.
That was beautiful.
Very well said.
It's nice to have a hobby, right?
And very impressed with your poetic abilities. When you told me about this earlier today, I wasn't expecting anything as loquacious or thorough or really well put together. Obviously worked on that. That's good stuff. All right, with reports behind us and poems behind us, is there any public comment before we close out the evening? If any members of the audience wish to say anything, raise your virtual hands. This would be a good time. So far, no takers. Going once, going twice, gone. Is there, are there any other business before the board tonight? Julianne?
Just a point of clarification. I think I, I, I either misspoke or I misheard. You've mentioned it, the cleanup day is April twenty-ninth. That's what I have. What it, what is?
I have the twenty-second, but let me should get that right.
First day.
Right.
Twenty-second.
Okay, you're, you're right. It is the twenty-ninth. I don't know how I had the twenty-second.
Well, that's our stay, you might have.
Okay, maybe that's maybe that's why.
Okay, just so, and no one got to you. Okay, thank you.
So the correct date is the twenty-ninth?
Correct date is definitely the twenty-ninth. I apologize for having that in wrong. I don't know what the source of that information was, but I probably just mistyped it. Thank you very much, Julianne, for catching that. With that, is there any other business before we close the meeting? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chair, I move the board adjourned.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Julianne to adjourn. All those in favor, Jason?
I.
Scott?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Julianne?
I.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor. We are adjourned eight thirty-eight PM. Thank you very much for speeding through a lengthy agenda. Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks.
Everyone.